And enhance the educational experiences of our students. Thank you for being here today. Let's get started with our agenda. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to ask everybody to participate in a moment of silence to honor our GMS para educator that recently passed away, David Bailey. So if you just take a few minutes or a few seconds here to. Thank you. Okay, so we'll start first with the presentations. Dr. Shandor, I believe you have some information relating to the start of the 2024-2025 school year.
I do, thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Good evening, board members, good evening, staff. We're going to start off this evening, I have an opening of school report. I gave a little bit of information at the August 26 meeting, which was the first day of school, but now I have a little more information to share with the board and the community tonight. So, we welcomed 13,271 students back to school. Our team was able to visit all 19 schools multiple times the first week to meet and greet and support all of our schools. Staff were excited to welcome our students back. Each of the 19 buildings were extremely clean, so I did want to give kudos to Mr. Dolak and Mr. Lynch and all of our maintenance team, including all of our custodians. As I shared back in the August meeting, we hired 104 new teachers and we introduced 12 new division and school leaders, which includes principals, assistant principals, counselors, and ACCs, and four of those folks I introduced at the August 26 meeting. The good news is they all showed up and we had a really smooth opening to the school year. On the first day of school, we had 10,846 students rode the bus, which collectively covered an impressive 9,359 miles. We started the year with five more bus drivers, 98, than last year, and we have another five being trained currently. All routes are covered and transportation continues to hire and train. Thanks to the dedicated efforts of James Riddick, our Director of Transportation, and everyone on his team, including all of our folks that do the routing, that take the phone calls, all of our bus drivers, of course, and all of our assistants. Everything ran really smoothly last week with minimal issues, and those issues that we did have, we made sure that we contacted those families immediately. Their hard work truly made a difference in ensuring a seamless start to the year. As far as construction goes, I know that Mr. Sheerheart did give you an update, but I wanted to follow up a little bit this evening as well. We completed the HVAC renovation at TAB Middle School, and we have all but finished the one at Mount Vernon Elementary School, which we hope to have complete Monday. We also completed the fire alarm system replacements at both of those schools. The senior academy, which Mr. Schaefer bragged about at the last meeting. This six-classroom modular building was added at Waller Mill. Additionally, we completed the gym refresh and locker room refresh at York High School and were nearly complete at TAB High School. Finally, the new adaptive playground at DARE Elementary School was completed last week. We're actually going to have an event tomorrow, I believe at 11 o'clock. We have the State Superintendent coming in town as well, which is to help us celebrate that. We also managed to serve 5,427 mules on the first day of school, which is 241 more than last year. Last but not least, we did have 803 new kindergartners embarked on their first day of school ever with us. We look forward to helping guide the class of, are you ready for this? Class of 2037, on their educational journey. And now everyone in here is thinking about which year they graduate. All in all, we had a great start to the 24-25 school. We are really proud of our team, especially for the preparations. So if there's any questions or comments related to the opening of school report, I'll certainly respond to those now, but I also have a statement to talk about safety. So if there's any questions, I'll certainly entertain those now. All right, so let me jump into this. So I did want to take a few minutes to address the board as well as our staff and our community. School and division administrators have worked with law enforcement to investigate rumors circulating on social media of a reported threat, which included two of our schools, TAB Middle and TAB High. While the York Lakoshan Sheriff's Office has determined there's no credible threat in that situation, officers were also made aware of a separate incident involving a social media post by a 14-year-old TAB High School student. This student is currently facing criminal charges and discipline based on the YCSD Student Handbook Code of Conduct. So we're nine years into the school year, and I want to take this opportunity to remind our students, our staff, and our families of the seriousness of such threats, our commitment to take each one of these seriously. Students who make such threats, whether as a prank, joke, or a momentary lapse of judgment, are making poor decisions which can have lifelong consequences. These actions not only disrupt learning and create fear, but they also can lead to severe disciplinary actions and even criminal charges. Parents and guardians, we need your help to prevent these situations. Please speak with your children about the seriousness of making threats or engaging in any unsafe behavior. Remind them social media is a powerful and potentially dangerous tool, especially when used in moments of stress, anger, and other emotions. If you're not already monitoring their social media and text messaging, please do so regularly. We have a collective responsibility to keep our children safe. I do want to commend our students and families for bringing the rumors to our attention. Every member of our community must treat information regarding school safety responsibly. When misinformation is spread, it can create problems rather than prevent them. Any threat or concern should be reported directly and immediately to law enforcement and school officials. Quite simply, if you hear something or see something, say something. We want our students to know they can and should report concerns to a trusted adult. Here are a few things to know and share with your child to help keep our schools as safe as possible. If you see or hear a threat, call 911 if there is any possibility of immediate risk to someone. If your student comes home to you with information they heard or saw on social media, help them save this post and then report it to the appropriate authorities. And finally, use YCSD's report-it form and/or hotline at 757-890-5000 to notify the school. Again, we take all of these concerns seriously, any threats, and we know that there was an incident in Georgia just last week. We take all these rumors or whatnot extremely seriously. We work very closely with the Sheriff's Office. We've had numerous calls with them on the weekend and all morning. So we do work very closely and we have a great relationship with them. However, parents, I'm imploring you, please talk to your students about what they post, what's on their phones, what they hear, what they see, more importantly, what they say at school and what they bring to school. We really have to do a good job policing this as a community. Thank you very much for the time this morning, or this evening, sorry.
Thank you. And along those lines, I'd like to tag on to something Dr. Shandor said as it relates to the safety aspect with what just happened with in Georgia. I would like for the board to take an extra layer of precaution by going to the schools. I know most of you are in your schools and looking, but just another lens in specifically looking at safety. When you go there, you know, the entrances, any exits, anything that you notice that could possibly be an issue, so we could say, we've done our due diligence and we've really looked at it, because we're charged to do that, that's part of our responsibility. So just during this month, I'd like everybody to take that extra time, and if you can't because work schedules or whatever, let me know. The buck stops here, I will do it. But, you know, I'd like for us to make sure that we get that done. I think parents would really appreciate that. Anybody questions about that, or sound okay?
No, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so, let's see. All right, so I think we have another, we have a presentation, staffing update, Dr. Shandor.
Yes, yep. So Dr. Wrights, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to share an update regarding the status of summer hiring as current as the, is it the ninth day of school? It is the ninth day of school. Dr. Wrights.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mrs. Goodwin, members of the board. I will be providing you tonight with an update on staffing and our efforts with recruitment and retention. I would like to celebrate the achievement of reducing and maintaining the low number of vacancies and acknowledge the hard work and dedication of everyone involved with recruitment and our retention efforts. As you can see from this chart and the year past, which is listed on this chart, we have the teachers with special education, classroom teachers, library media specialists, and speech and language pathologists. To expand upon the three vacant special education teachers, one of them is at McGruder, and that is in our communication support class. And that current teacher was hired as a special education coach for us this summer, and we are still looking for her replacement, so that's a vacancy there. And then we have one at Waller Mill, and that is for a new behavior support class that we are looking at creating, and that was added late summer, so we're looking for that teacher to start that class. So that's two of those three vacancies. In addition, this data notes 8.5 vacancies as of today. And so seven of those vacancies are currently staffed with a long-term substitute who are finalizing their steps to become licensed teachers, a licensed teacher of record. The library media specialist up at DARE Elementary, she is a licensed teacher and she will finish her certification for a library media specialist in December. This is possible through the Senate Bill of 142, which was just finalized last Tuesday, where we can have a one-year local eligibility license, and was recently passed, like I said last week, and this legislation allows divisions the option to employ licensure applicants for a non-renewable, one-year license, only valid within the division, and it has to be someone who has a bachelor's degree or who has worked within and has experience or training in the subject or content area. It does not apply to our special education. A special education teacher cannot apply for that. So through this passing of the bill, that takes our teacher vacancies down to two. So YCSD's commitment to maintaining low vacancies and continuing to improve our culture, workplace environment is a testament to our recruiting efforts, and it's paying off. Also, YCSD will be hosting 21 student teachers this year and several speech and language pathologists and counseling interns this year, which will increase our opportunity to build relationships with those individuals who may choose to jump onto YCSD and, you know, become a permanent capacity for them in a teaching career. So one real quick note of celebration that I want to point out just from this total is we have 659 teacher positions, and this chart indicates that 8.5 teacher positions are currently vacant, like I stated, and seven of them will be, have an individual in place who will transition into that licensed position as soon as we do that House Bill 142. This equates to YCSD being 99.6% fully staffed, when we have a vacancy rate of less than 1%. This is the second year in a row we can proudly keep our vacancies below 1%, and perspective in USA Today, it reports that 45% of our public schools in the United States are understaffed with teachers. This is our non-licensed vacancies positions, so we have a special education para educator, custodian, general ed, para educator, a bus driver, and a secretary. Other notable hires, we just had one start this week, educational diagnostician started today, and we had an RN at Queens Lake start last week. Pending some hires that we have right now that are not included in this chart, we have 1.5 general education paras that we're looking at. We have a bus driver, three special education paras, and one physical therapist that we are looking to hire this week. So from our recruiting strategies, recruitment is critical to the process for school divisions to ensure they have qualified and dedicated educators and staff. To attract top talent, YCSD does the following strategies of recruiting for our teachers and our staff. We work with partnerships with the workforce development, the military, again, as I mentioned, student teachers and interns, and our para-to-teacher pipeline program. For talent acquisition, we expanded provisionally licensed teacher pipeline for hard-to-fill positions, and then we also have job jamborees and pop-up job fairs throughout the year for those hard-to-fill positions. We have early offers, which are attracting the best candidates. We have our student-teacher early offer program, and we have hard-to-fill positions that remain open on our website throughout the year, so we can fill that applicant pool. So our branding and our outreach is research and development for specialty programs, definitely word of mouth, so recruitment by our principals and our supervisors, and they put a lot of our job openings within their newsletters they send out to their community and to their families, and then our forward focus on staffing needs. And so recruiting is not just finding those qualified teachers, but also about attracting educators who are a good fit for YCSD's culture, mission, and their values. Our well-planned and executed recruitment strategies help us find and retain that top talent, and that is why YCSD still continues to be a destination division to work. Our retention strategies, remember that retaining teachers and staff is an ongoing effort that requires a combination of career advancement, professional development, and a positive work environment. YCSD fits its unique needs of its staff by offering many ways to retain our staff. For incentives, we have tuition reimbursement, we have the expansion and analysis of exit data and trends, wellness initiatives, staff recognition, and competitive salary and benefits package. For communication, we have focus groups where the Human Resources Department, between now and December, goes out to every one of our schools and sits with brand-new employees and just talks to them about the culture, the climate, the onboarding, and how they're doing. My YCSD actively supports timely updates and supporting resources, and monthly focus with principals on how to foster a positive work environment. And also, this month, we started something that's going to go out every month, is our Pulse surveys, and our employees are asked five questions that focus on enhancing retention and our culture and the needs of our staff. And then we also have support, which is promotion of a work-life balance. We assign mentors, we have a supportive leadership, quarterly onsite forums with new staff, and supportive and inclusive culture. And for our professional development, YCSD's investment of an ongoing PD, content required by our VDOE, and then self-selected YCSD offers those career growth opportunities. And my last slide is looking ahead in October, sort of a preview of what's coming up. We're going to talk about working conditions, our teacher-pupil ratios, employee retention and vacancies, and our licensed hires and lateral moves. And that concludes our staffing update for this evening, and if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to talk to you again.
I have one question. Will we be getting a report? I know you had your candor with Shandor sessions. Will we be getting a report to take a look at what, you know, some of the comments were, both positive and negative, to review and analyze those?
Absolutely. Most likely, I'm hopeful by the end of the month or the October work session. I'm hoping to pull that all together by then.
Thank you.
And I did want to add, the Pulse survey that we just sent out to staff, it closes tomorrow.
Hey, I have a question about SB 142. It's only good for a year.
Correct.
Now, the licensure on the state end is very backed up, right?
Somewhat. It all depends on the month, but right now we are a little bit backed up. It takes a while for them to get back to us for those answers to licensure. But what we're hoping is through this Senate Bill 142 is we get these one-year contracts with these new employees, and then within the year, we also do ITCH. We do many different ways where we can get them full certification, so they can continue beyond that one year with us.
Okay, so we won't be amped for by the state?
Correct.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, you keep saying it's Senate Bill.
Yes.
Does the House have a matching one, and it's already been passed and the governor signed?
It's my understanding it went from the House to the Senate, and it's already been approved. So both houses have approved it. It was a House bill, and then it became a Senate bill, so it just was finished last Tuesday as a Senate bill.
Okay, so the governor hasn't signed it yet, but...
Yeah, everything is complete, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mine was just a comment, great job.
No, thanks.
I mean, to have that few, those few shortages, I think I was looking at shortages in other places, and there was one division, it was like 95 vacancies, it was crazy. I was like, wow, that's amazing.
Thanks.
And it's noticeable, actually, being in the school, seeing it, just within the staff and students, it's definitely noticeable.
Yeah.
And I think at this point in the school year, this is probably the best one that I can remember, as far as being fully staffed.
It helps with the Senate bill to allow us that opportunity to give those contracts. But also, too, we went to every single principal with those teachers in the building and asked them, are you good with moving forward with offering them this contract? And all of them were extremely excited, and yes, they want to. Example, we have a TAB High School teacher, and it's not certified, but she has a biology and a chemistry degree, teaching chemistry. So she knows the content, and she has been involved with higher education, but being in the classroom, she's doing an amazing job with the kids. So it just wields well for us as far as climate and culture to offer this opportunity to become a teacher.
Regarding that, since you brought that up, do you have the numbers of how many are provisional licenses and how many are full licenses? Because I know for the ones that are provisional, you have a set number of years. What is it, three years, still in order to get your full licensure? Do you know how we are along those lines for those hires? How many are still working for their full licensure?
Good question. I don't have the exact number, but I know it's below 10.
Below number 10 or 10%?
10.
10, number 10, okay.
Cool.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have a finance update. Dr. Shandor, say a few words about finance.
Yes, so we are absolutely, this will probably be the best finance update that we've had in nine and a half years. And you all know why I'm saying that, because I know he's sitting there watching this. So we wish Mr. Bowen well. He has, he's dealing with just a small health concern, and he'll be back to work hopefully soon. But we are happy to have Ms. Heather McGelligott. Did I say it right? McGelligott?
Yes.
Perfect. She's here to give us a finance update on behalf of Mr. Bowen. Heather.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Channor, members of the board. All right, for the finance update this evening, I have just a few items to discuss, starting with enrollment. After that, I will go over impact aid and federal grants. All right, student enrollment is a significant budget driver for state funding for the division. Because of this, finance pays close attention to enrollment numbers at the beginning of the school year. Enrollment numbers for tonight's presentation were pulled on day five. For FY '25, we are budgeted for an annual enrollment of 12,966 students. As of day five, we were at 12,976 students. This is an additional 10 students over budgeted enrollment. As of today, day nine, we're at 12,999, 33 over budgeted enrollment. These numbers do not include preschool and alternative students, as we receive funds separately for those students. Kindergarten enrollment as of day five was 794, which was down 12 students from last Total elementary enrollment on day five was 5,734 students, up 20 from last year. Oh, where'd it go? Total middle school enrollment was 3,150 students on day five. This number is up 71 students from last year. And as of day five, high school enrollment was 4,092 students, which is down 30 from last year. All right. Mr. Bowen presented an update on excess impact aid funds for FY '24 at the August 26 meeting. Dr. Carroll will share additional information about the funds. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Ms. McGelligott. Yes, so as Mr. Bowen had shared with you, we are looking to work with the county on getting that 4.3 million in excess funds and starting to put that towards some projects that can do some things to support the schools, make a better learning environment for students, and also to get a jumpstart on the TAB High project. For the auditorium renovations, primarily, we'll be looking first in prioritizing soundboards, microphones, and speakers, so we have a better sound experience, visiting the stage lighting and the curtains, and so that, you know, all of our productions will look better. And then secondarily, based on funds, we'd be looking at, are there seating things, seating that needs to be corrected, acoustics, are the stage condition, and other features, maybe like house lighting and flooring, and screens and projection ability? So we're looking at all those things. We're going to be doing a needs assessment at each school. It's going to be our staff that's doing that, and then going out and getting estimates from different businesses to see what we can put together and make the best use of the funds, and to standardize that system so that we have an even experience across our high schools. And then also, we want to put a good portion to the TAB High project. We want to go to geothermal as the energy source there. You all know that the TAB High is the biggest energy waster that we have in this division.
Probably could have said that better.
I didn't build this school.
It was a state of the art.
It used to be, yeah.
It was 1972, it was.
So we want to improve the HVAC there, because we're due for an HVAC renovation anyway, and so we want to move that to a geothermal. So we will be looking to possibly start the wells for that and get a jumpstart on that, as well as some design work for the project, and so that will encompass it. And I don't know if I have that much more than that for you, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Not really a question, I guess, just a comment that if you can take a look, I know it's my district, but TAB High, I heard from a number of students in drama last year that they were saying whenever they were using the lights, they would pop and sizzle.
Right.
That that becomes a safety issue versus just having better lighting.
Yeah, that was reported to us, and we've sent our maintenance team out there to, Mr. Dolak and his team went out there and replaced some of those lights. All the more reason why we've got to move forward and make some changes to...
We'll be looking for an LED solution.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have that type of heat and gives the lighting projects, you know, more flexibility to have better shows, but like you said, it's also going to be safer.
Okay, thank you.
And when will we know about this, funds?
We're hoping to bring that to you in October. It really, it just depends on how much time we can do the assessment, and then get some prices, and then bring those to Mr. Bowen, obviously, and then sort of work through, because if you look up there at the 4.3 million, the cost for some of these items, I can't tell you how much a sound system costs. I know that our team will do that homework. And the curtains, I mean, the curtains are, I believe, the original curtains at a few of our schools, and they're...
They're rotting.
They're, I'll just say they're in really bad shape.
Yep.
But also, when you look at the HVAC and the geothermal projects for TAB High School, that's just to get us started. That's right, Dr. Carroll?
Yes, there's money in the CIP starting next summer. Actually, I think there's some already for design, but we want to also make sure that we can get to the construction phase, and the geothermal's the first phase we want to tackle.
Yeah, so...
And we would be shooting to do that this winter.
Yeah, we're hoping to bring that to you at the October work session.
Okay, so we're going to have all of those numbers for the geothermal, because I know that might take longer to come up.
We'll probably have estimates right now. We've got an engineer working on that right now. We have a general idea of the scope of what we're going to need for wells, but we don't have an exact figure yet. We're looking towards that. And as far as the auditoriums, we've got a progress meeting tomorrow, and so we should have more to say later.
Board members, as a reminder, YCSD received over $16 million in federal stimulus funds related to the pandemic. School divisions have until September 30 to obligate the funds and November 15 to complete drawdowns and reimbursements. The following grants have been spent and reimbursements are complete. SRR2, which includes two competitive grants to address unfinished learning and the extended school year. Spending and reimbursements are also complete for the ARB Homeless, and not shown on our slideshow, the CSLFRF grant, which we refer to as the HVAC grant. These funds were put toward the new HVAC system at TAB Middle School. Spending is complete for SRR3 to include a competitive grant to address unfinished learning. We are reimbursing these grants and are on track to meet... We are reimbursing these grants and are on track to meet our November fifteenth deadline for reimbursements. Dr. Stevenson will present a final report on the S R three plan at the September twenty-third meeting. Thank you, that concludes my update.
I just want to point out that all those ones for the unfinished learning, like when we were going through it, we were one of the top school divisions as far as percentage of the money that was actually spent on remediation and bringing the kids up. And it shows in our latest scores. So, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Told you that would be the best finance update we've had.
Yeah, you're right. And it was quicker, too.
Thank you, Ms. McGelligott, we appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Okay, great, all right. We're now going to go into the strategic plan, division assessment results. Dr. Shandor, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Goodwin. And we're going to, as we're playing musical chairs here, we have two team members we're going to welcome to the table. So Dr. Candy Skinner, our chief academic officer, Dr. Aaron Butler, who's our director of student services, and Ms. Lisa Beasley, who's our coordinator of testing and accountability, will provide our assessment results. Dr. Skinner.
Well, I will in just a moment. I'm having a few technical issues here. I apologize, I'm.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. F I.
There you go, that one.
No?
No.
There it is, there it is, yeah.
Let's do this, give me one second. Sorry. It's okay. No, it's kind of frozen. This happened to us once before. It's a. That's mine. No, it's hers. That's mine.
Okay, let's see if we can go backwards to that one now?
There we go.
Okay. All right, here we go.
Dr. Skinner.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Shandor? All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Shandor, tonight, Dr. Butler, Ms. Beasley, and I will be sharing our school divisions twenty-three, twenty-four assessment results with you. And as you may have already seen, the Virginia Department of Education shared its assessment results on August twentieth. And they shared the state results, and tonight, we're going to build on that and show how our students' performance was. Okay, so the information that I shared tonight directly supports future-ready graduates, that our students will acquire the knowledge, skills, habits, and traits necessary for success in future educational experiences, the workforce, and life. The presentation will be divided into three sections. The first part will be the academic outcomes for the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four school year. The second part of the presentation will include an overview of the school quality indicators and school performance levels. And then the third part will be on the new state accountability system that was just recently approved by the Virginia Board of Education. We'll provide you with a brief overview of all of those things. So let's jump in first to our academic outcomes and see how our students did. I'm pleased to share that all nineteen of our schools were once again fully accredited. We attribute the success to the collective efforts and commitment of our students, our teachers, our administrators at the building and the division level. We have some of those here with us this evening, and of course, our families. We also know that attendance plays a key role in academic success. So this evening, we thought we'd start the presentation with an overview on our division's chronic absenteeism. Dr. Butler is going to lead us in that part of the presentation.
There you go.
Chronic absenteeism is an accreditation measure that tracks the number of students who miss more than ten percent of the academic school year. So for example, if a student is enrolled for a hundred and eighty school days, if they miss eighteen days, that would represent ten percent of that school year. This measure includes both excused and unexcused absences, and it is widely recognized as a critical barrier to academic achievement. Preliminary results indicate that YCSD saw a twenty-two percent reduction in students who are chronically absent. The rate of chronic absenteeism fell from fourteen-point-six percent, as you see on the board for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, to eleven-point-four percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. During the school year, the division implement various strategies to improve student attendance. We continue to work with our school-based teams to implement targeted interventions to address specific disparities related to attendance. However, a critical component to school attendance is parental support. It is important that our parents continue to partner with us in our efforts to improve our chronic absenteeism rates. The improvement of our chronic absenteeism rates reinforces how does a strategic plan, supportive culture, and collective commitment prioritizes directly impacts student success. And some of the action steps that we did take, our student connection coaches, so in all of our schools from K through twelve, they have a stipend position that's helped pay for through the all-in grant money as well as Title IV. And those individual are early intervention for our students who struggle for attendance. And so they do things such as home visits, they contact families, they try to reinforce positive school attendance through different incentive programs. And that helps try to connect our students to school before there is a problem. So before a student hits more than five high school absences, they're on top of it to try to support them. Other things that we did, as well as professional development, we focused very heavily on what are best practices from attendance works, which is something that the Department of Education recommended, to try to support our students. One of the things that VDO, we also gave us an option this past school year, was any student that lost instructional time due to absence, they could come in after school, before school, or on Saturday. And several of our schools use this method, and they could recoup some of their lost instructional time, so that helped us as well. We have a few students, so in every zone, we do have a van that most of our high schools use. So if a student, for some reason, is unable to attend, they have a procedure or a process to provide personalized transportation. York High School, they call it the Falcon Flyer, but they will go, and they'll go pick up students if they contact the school. And we also provide transportation for some of our students to come on the Saturdays, and they have remediation to recover lost time. We've been working in a partnership with the York County Youth and Juvenile Services, and they have some called Check and Connect. And so when a student starts reaching a high number of absences, they will actually come in and partner with the school and provide mentorship and work with those students. And that was one of the partnerships. We have several other ones, but that was one of the keys that helped with some of our absenteeism rates. And then, as I shared before, with just our supportive culture and collective commitment strategies that we have been using as part of the strategic plan, by using all of these strategies together, we've been able to impact chronic absenteeism. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presection back over to Dr. Skinner, who will give us the update on graduation.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned at the very beginning, we were going to kind of stop along the way, because I'm sure you may have questions, and so maybe we take just a minute. Do you have any questions in regards to chronic absenteeism, or Dr. Butler?
Well, I see that there's a lot of programs and resources put to working with the student. Is there anything to include the families?
So some of the things that we utilized, and it falls under the partnerships. So several of our schools decided that because parents are so critical, a good example would be York Town Elementary School. They had a parent breakfast for students that really focused on positive attendance. And it was very well attended, and they had it where they had different activities for the parents to talk about, the importance of attendance, how you can support your children, as well as the best way to communicate with the school. You know, because most families nowadays are very highly technological with their phones. So they showed them how you use the app to send absences in versus the old-school writing the letters. So there's different things that we've been trying to partner with our parents to help with that.
Do you have data that shows which of these strategies is working better than others? Or are you doing so many of them at the same time that it's hard to differentiate between them? And then also, the other question I had is because I know counted in the chronic absenteeism are unexcused and excused. And obviously, if they're excused, there's going to be different interventions, because if it's excused, it's not really an issue. So how is that handled? Kind of threw both of them at you.
Oh, no problem. So we tried to individualize, all of our schools are different. So when we looked at their data at the beginning of the year, we've been trying to do analysis, and that's one of the powerful things of Power BI. It allows us to go in the school community to find out what is the driving force for your chronic absenteeism. So in one particular school, it might be, we have a large population of families who have family in other parts of the country. So trying to coordinate breaks and vacations to correlate with our calendar versus random times during the year. And so they tried to share with families that they would excuse the absences for so many, but would they please try to coordinate those times with the calendar? At other locations, it maybe was an access issue, and so that's why we had to use the vans and personalized transportation. Some of our schools, it was more with our connection coaches, people just needed a connection to school. We try to track that now by looking at how many schools are involved in extracurricular sports and co-curricular activities. So it might just be that a student didn't have a connection to school. So our student connection coaches will reach out and say, hey, we know that you're really good into music. You know, we have a guitar club, but in order to participate, you got to be at school every day or have to come at least on a more frequent basis. And so they very much targeted those populations. And when we go into the data, we can see if there's trends or patterns. We look at it on a monthly basis, and our school teams have really been focusing hard on that to make sure that we are keeping up. So I think that was to that first question, but then you asked me a second question.
Well, because of the excused and unexcused. Unexcused, obviously, are going, you know, you have the issue with interventions to try to help them come. If they're excused absences, how would any interventions be used because if they're excused?
So that's one of the things with the state when they gave us that extended learning time. So if we do have people that were legitimately had illnesses and different things, we could work with those schools and those students on those Saturday programs or after-school programs, because when you had so many clock hours, they would help excuse one of the days of absence, so they would bring down your numbers. And many of our families were open to that, because they valued getting that instructional support, because it couldn't just be, we stayed after school to do some type of activity. It actually had to be a licensed teacher, had to oversee the program. It had to actually be in reading, math, science, or one of the core content areas. And so by doing that, they reinforced any content that was lost when they were absent for those days.
Okay, so you're actually regaining the lost seat hours?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting.
All right. So moving on into the presentation, I want to share now with you our preliminary on-time graduation rate. And for the class of twenty-two, it was ninety-eight percent. The state will publicly release the state data. We expect later this month, and that will be on the school quality profile on the Virginia Department of Education website. So again, this is preliminary data. We do know, though, in York County, that every student reaching this milestone is very important to us. And so I want to share with you just a little bit more data about our on-time graduation rates. And here on this chart, you can see our preliminary on-time graduation rate for our reporting groups over the past three years. And I'll pause and just give you a moment to, there's a lot of numbers on that screen. So since two thousand and twenty-two, there have been improvements for our English learners, Hispanic, multiple races, and economically disadvantaged student groups. And additionally, one hundred percent of our students identified as English learners have graduated in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And so at this time, unless you have any questions about graduation, again, this is preliminary, because we really don't have a whole lot of information other than what we have here. I can't share you, share how we compare to against, you know, other school divisions and things of that nature, but I can give you our data, yes.
Do we keep track of how many are graduating straight, you know, basically straight through with no adjustments of anything needed?
Or your cohort, right?
Yes.
You know, with the cohorts versus those who, they might not have graduated, but things were excused. And I just know this from previously working on the, being a teacher's side, that there were some issues in the past that some students, things were excused, that they wouldn't have graduated, but they did graduate because they didn't, you know, there were adjustments made. Do we keep track of that?
We do, we do. And as you attended the summer, summer graduation, we have some students that need just a little bit more time, or some students who graduate early, right? But we allow that to, we put that in place so that they have that opportunity. And we do have a pretty thorough process. Dr. Butler talked about chronic absenteeism, but we have a large team of people, and they meet monthly. They start monthly, and they actually move to almost every week as we get closer to graduation. Our goal is to have every student graduate on time. I mean, that is really our goal. And so that team is working very hard to put strategies in place, to employ everything that we can, including family engagement, to make sure that those students meet that graduation deadline.
Right.
Yeah, and I would add, over the last, I don't know how many years, is Dr. Wright still here? He didn't leave yet. When did we start the OGR process, those meetings? Lisa, maybe you know that.
We started.
Three or four years ago?
No, we started with Dr. God.
Pre-pandemic, so I'd say twenty-eighteen, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, we meet, is it monthly, is it?
We start monthly, and then it goes to weekly.
So the meetings are with every high school, and there's, they start with a list of students who are potentially in danger or off track or whatnot. And we go through those with the counselors. They have the, I think some of the connection coaches are a part of those. Obviously, the administrators are a part of those.
Social workers.
Social workers, counselors, et cetera. So, and a number of folks in this room attend those at every high school. I attend those as much as I can, just so I can hear and understand sort of what some of the scenarios are. And it's really interesting, because every child is different. So you may have a list, this long list of kids, that it may not be because they were behind or that they, you know, failed a couple of courses. It may be that they moved from Texas, or this one moved from Korea, or this. So trying to figure out how we can make sure that these kids meet these requirements is important. And I'll tell you, it's such a wonderful process to watch and listen to. When I'm blown away listening to our counselors and our team work through every different situation, because they're not all, it's not just, yeah, hey, this child's behind. There's multiple reasons for potentially why they're behind. So kudos to the team who's done that. And I think that speaks to those numbers, especially when you look at some of those subgroup numbers that we should be really proud of.
That's a good question about students with disabilities. We kind of have a downward trend. Is there something to be worried about, or?
So this is something that we have been focused on. Sometimes there is a reason that maybe for that particular student, they may need a little extra time. And in the state of Virginia, students are allowed extra time to work towards meeting their requirements. As I shared, you know, this is something that we need to continue to focus on, because we want to make sure that every student does meet that milestone. Some of that comes down to transition meetings at the high school level and IEP meetings, making sure that they're getting everything that they need to do. But that is something that we need to continue to work on. All right, I'm going to move on now to talk about our core content subject areas. So during Governor Youngkin's press conference on August twentieth, he spoke about Virginia's performance on state assessments, state assessments. And notably during that conference, he talked about CNBC's recent study that showed that ranked Virginia as one of the highest or best educational systems in the country. And as such, we believe that comparing our student performance at the state averages and compared to school divisions is a key data point. Because of that, you're going to see that throughout the presentation. I'll refer to how we compared at the state level and how we compared at the regional level. So this graph that you're looking at here provides an overview of state and York County performance. State's in the gray, York County is marked in the blue. Now, as you can see, for all of our subject areas there, we have outperformed that state average in all five content areas, anywhere between eleven and fifteen percentage points. This slide, so now we're going to kind of take and break each of those out. We're going to start with reading and writing. This slide provides that three-year longitudinal data for reading and for writing. I'm going to, I want to explain, so the purple is the two thousand and twenty-two, the light blue is two thousand and twenty-three, and the dark blue is two thousand and twenty-four. So when you look at reading and writing, you can see overall our pass rates were eighty-seven percent for both of those. And in reading, you can see there's been consistent progress for our students. That mirrors state performance. They also see that very similar pattern. When you look at writing, you do see that ten percentage point increase. I want to explain that just a little bit. The Virginia Department of Education made the decision to no longer give the eighth grade writing assessment as a standalone assessment. And instead, that assessment now will become part of the integrated reading and writing. We call that the IRW. And so it's no longer included in our writing data that you see in that blue chart. What's in that blue chart right there is just eleventh grade, end of course, as we call it, writing data. So you really can't compare, it's like apples and oranges. The first two included eighth and end of course. The dark blue is just end of course. All right, so my question would be then is, well, then how did our end of course do, right, over the last three years? We have that data for you as well. So this is our eleventh grade end of course writing assessment. You can see from this chart that we've been relatively consistent within one percentage point over the last three years for just eleventh grade. The state has not released IRW as of yet. So once we start seeing that, you'll see another change to the data patterns as well, because that eighth grade and that fifth grade writing will be integrated in, right? But for now, this is the. But for now, this is the information that we have. All right. So now on this slide, you can see our pass rates for reading by grade level test, along with a comparison to the 131 school divisions in the state of Virginia and the 15 schools in our region two comparators. Virginia Department of Education does not rank schools. But however, we do see and we compare ourselves, you can see that in across the state, we are in the top eight performing school divisions and the top two for our region. On a special note, you'll see that grades three and four, we are noted as the second highest in the state. This chart provides reporting group performance and reading as compared to the state. The data that you see here for the 2024 data for York County is very similar to our reporting group categories for 2023, just as kind of reading, it's kind of remained consistent, the same for this. I do want to say, though, as an important note, that while we may not, while we do exceed the state averages and that's, you know, we're very proud of that, we are remaining very focused in making sure that all of our student outcomes move in that positive direction, just as you had shared a few minutes ago, that question that you had. So we still have some work to do here. Like I shared earlier in our presentation, this slide provides state and region two comparison data for student groups. When you compare us across the state, you'll see that we are in the top nine school divisions. And in region two, we are in the top, or we're still remain in the lead of our school divisions there. I'll give you a second to look at that. And then I would, I like to close out this part of our presentation before I turn it over to Mrs. Beasley and just talk a little bit about all the instructional strategies and the intended actions we've taken this year to support our students. First of all, we, we have provided professional development. Last year, we, was our third year for letters training. We concluded that and as I shared, we had close to, I think, 98 or 99% of our K-2 teachers received that training. And then we also brought in university staff to work with some of our middle school and our high school English teachers. They met with them to talk about how to work with students on and above grade level text. They also worked with student, our teachers on supporting some of our struggling students in the areas of reading. We also added an elementary and secondary literacy coach last year. So that was something our teachers were asking for and we were able to make happen. We also added a norm reference screener that's aligned to the National Assessment of Educational Progress. We call that the DIBELS. And we use that in grades three through eight. We also have a grade three through eight division common assessment that we provide to our students each quarter that helps us monitor student reading progress. And in January, as I mentioned many times before, we started our All-In Virginia tutoring program in grades three through eight. And then last but not least, this is a tradition of our school division, something that we do every year, but we do have targeted school improvement plans. And so what happens is when a student, when a school receives the information of how their students performed, they create a school improvement plan that includes goals, action steps, and how they will progress monitor. And it's very specific. So the goals will, will tie it to a percentage or something of that nature. It really depends on what data they're looking at. And then they will identify how they're going to meet that goal and then how they will progress monitor that goal along the way. All right, so I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Beasley and she is going to talk about math, science, and history.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Before we start? Do we have data and could we see it of which of these action steps are, you know, working in different areas? Because it's great seeing that there are these action steps, but which ones are showing that they're the best, which ones eh, we're just kind of stagnant across the top, you know, it's not harming or it's not, you know, it's not helping, they're just kind of there.
And that's kind of what we do. When we talk about, you know, we, we as a division, if there is a tier one issue, we address it at the division level. But when you start to really think about school to school, we, those school improvement plans really target and identify their specific needs. And when I talked about how they progress monitor through the year, we don't let a whole year go by. If that is not working and it's not helping our students, we will quickly, those are kind of very fluid documents and they'll change that, that action step. They'll recalculate, you know, recalibrate what they're doing because we want to make sure that we don't let a year go by, especially when we're talking about reading performance. We have to really monitor in some of those assessments that I shared with you a few minutes ago, they're for that reason. We want to know right then and there, if this isn't working for our student, what are we going to do differently? What do we want to make, you know, how do we want to change that so that we see that student making progress? So it gets down to that very granular level at the school.
And I just want to add to that because those school improvement plans, I mean, I don't think school was out, how many days was school out and they were already working on school improvement plans? I was like, are you going to go on vacation? No, I got to work on my school improvement plan.
So we do at the end of the year.
Right at the end of the year, so that data is ready as soon as school starts to know where they have to make those improvements.
Absolutely. So we, I think we had those by the end of June, Dr. Shandor, those meetings were in place. Every school has to do a school improvement plan review where they talk about what worked, what may not have worked, and how they might change it for the next year. Today, we actually are, then they also have to do a very thorough needs assessment. And so they've been working on their needs assessments since, I guess, June. And those needs assessments are very specific to the school. And then they use that information to write their school improvement plans. Today, we had, we were meeting with two schools in particular. We go and I meet with each school to look at their needs assessments to make sure that they're on track with what they're putting into their school improvement plan. So it's a very thorough process. So to say that one particular action across a school division, it's hard to say that. I can tell you some data about all-in tutoring because that was something we deployed across the school division. I have some data on that. But when you really talk about it, you've got to get to that school level because when you think about those subgroups, schools can be in different places with those. If we took that approach as just a school division, we may not get to that specific needs of that school.
And the other thing that I would add, thank you. The other step that I don't know if we discussed today is we also have all the principals and assistant principals come in and present at the end of the school year. So make sure that which day we do that in the summer, but it's over a series of days. We've done that for a number of years here where a principal and her assistant principals or his assistant principals have to come in and typically bring an ACC with them. They present their school, school improvement plan to us and their results from the year about what went well, what didn't go well, what they're looking at changing, et cetera, leading into, I think I finally got you. Still there. So that's a really important part of our process, not just for student results, but also for collaboration and sharing information because we have a number, we open those up to all the administrators. They can come in and participate in those and watch and listen to those presentations so they can learn from each other. So that's, it's been a really valuable part of the process.
And, and the other thing that I didn't mention that is when we are implementing something like our DIBELS assessment, which is aligned to the NAP assessment, and Molly is sitting behind you, Molly Brown is our coordinator for English, that is something her and her team are monitoring at the division level. And so if we begin to see something that maybe this, at a, across a division or at a particular school, we will go out, we will meet with that team and we will begin working on what might have gone wrong or where we need to change things around a little bit. So it's a very fluid process, but it's ongoing. We don't wait to the end.
Okay, the, the reason I was asking this is making sure that, you know, as a board, since, you know, we're, we deal with the budget and all of that, making sure that we're using the resources that have the best return on investment.
Absolutely.
Of what you all need because there are so many different action steps that you can take out there, but most of them cost money and figuring out which one is the best for either the division as a whole or the best for each particular area, you know, since the county is so.
What I hear you saying is it's really, it's school specific. Because what works really well at Yorktown Elementary may not be the same thing that's going to work well at Tab Elementary. They need something different. So I don't think you can just say, okay, this one thing and we're going to apply it. It's very different at.
No, this is cool. Yeah, but see, we could still look at it and say, okay, these two things were great for these schools here. So we, but they're not working for these two over here. So, you know, making sure that they've got the funding for this, but obviously we don't have to double up since it's not working up here, that kind of thing. You know, making sure that we're using the money wisely and where it needs to go for the best ever.
Absolutely.
I, I think that's why it's targeted for each school so that it would be. But I'd just like to take just a second and, and recognize and commend the entire division because all those reading scores that we saw on up there, those are COVID kids. Do you realize that? Do you know how much learning loss that we had? Okay? And that we have come back from? I mean, this is, I think it's pretty phenomenal, actually, that we are doing as good as we are because, I mean, it's, it's excellent. We've maintained 22 to 23 to 24, 87. I mean, that's pretty awesome. So let's just take a breath for a second and say, hey, we're doing good.
That's right, that's right. A lot of hard work.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to let Ms. Beasley continue on in the presentation.
So I'm going to continue with the review of three-year trend data. As you can see from this chart, we're looking at York County performance in mathematics, science, and history. Like state trends, our performance in math remains consistent. Our science scores declined by one percentage point and history maintained its 80% pass rate. While we exceed state averages in history and science, this is an area where we'll work with our teachers and our staff to identify strategies for improving student performance in these areas. So this table shows comparison data specifically for elementary mathematics. As you can see on the chart, our math scores are in the top six for the state and first for the region. This chart, the green chart at the top is our secondary math pass rate. These charts require just a bit more explanation in that we don't do comparison data for our secondary mathematics program because acceleration can begin in grade six. And the data represented is reflective of those students taking the course level assessment, which varies from division to division. So for example, when we're looking at the grade eight math SOL test, that content is pre-algebra content and can include students who are in grades six, seven, and eight that are enrolled in pre-algebra. Our grade seven students have three math options, which includes foundations of algebra seven, pre-algebra seven, and high school algebra. Grade seven students who are in math seven take the grade seven test. Grade seven students who are in pre-algebra take the math eight test. And grade seven students who are in algebra one take the algebra test. So because of these options, as shown in the blue chart, only about 38% of our students take the on-grade level math assessment last year. So it's important when you see the discrepancy there with that math seven, that you understand the percentage of students who are taking that assessment and are included in that pass rate.
This is only for the seventh grade?
This is, so your seventh grade enrollment is in the blue chart. So when you're looking at that algebra one enrollment, that's 291 seventh graders taking algebra one. So our math reporting group data shows a comparison here to the state. Like reading, all reporting groups outperformed the state average in math. In math, we did see some improvements in some of our specific reporting groups. So our black reporting group improved by four percentage points. So we went from 71% to 75%. Our Hispanic students improved two percentage points from 83% to 85%. And our English learners improved seven percentage points from 66% to 73%. We continue to recognize that there are some achievement gaps between reporting groups and our work over the coming year will be focused on narrowing these achievement gaps. So this is our state and region two comparisons for each of our reporting groups. As Dr. Skinner shared, this slide provides that comparison for you. When we compare to schools in region two, our performance is top two in the region. And when we compare our student group data across the state, the division group, the division data falls within the top eight for all reporting groups. So as we identified some action steps specifically related to reading, now it's important that we identify some action steps for math as we supported the action of our teachers, administrators, and staff. So first, in mathematics, we did have a revision of the math standards in August of last year. So for the 23, 24 school year, we taught both the old standards and the new standards, but continued to assess the old standards. So it's what the state sometimes refers to as a crosswalk year.
I think it's important to note, just real quick, those changes were approved in August by the state as the school year had already, I think, had they started, had we started at that point in time period? I think we had. So that's just an important note that we had to really kind of bring that on and roll with that, and that's why we did it that way.
We implemented diagnostic assessments for students in grades three through algebra that provided information for student, for teachers and for students that supported their remediation efforts, but also supported extension activities for students as appropriate. Ms. Enot, our math coordinator and our mathematics coaches conduct division-wide PLCs specifically for our classroom teachers and special education teachers in math seven and math eight. These are quarterly PLCs that are data-driven and include a level of professional development around those new standards or new types of questioning or new activities. Additionally, as far as professional development is concerned, turnkey professional development was developed for fact fluency. The new math standards emphasize fact fluency. And so this was a key task for our mathematics team so that our students were getting that instruction on those new standards. As with reading, we also implemented All-In Virginia tutoring for students in grades three through eight. And then additionally, we had our schools create those very targeted school improvement plans that had action steps specifically related to math data and math goals. So we'll stop here for a minute and see if you have any questions related to math, science, or history.
All right, okay, we're going to keep moving. I'm going to take back over the presentation. The next part is on the college, career, and civic readiness index. And up to just a few weeks ago, this is how the state measured college and career readiness for students. That changed on August 28th, when the Virginia Board of Education adopted a new accreditation system, accountability system, but we'll share more about that in a minute with you. This slide does show the five components of what we call CCCRI. And a student to be considered college and career ready in our previous system, they had to meet one of these areas here. So tonight will actually be our last presentation on CCCRI. Next year, we'll be talking about something a little bit different and we'll share more about that, but it's called the three E system. All right, so on this KPI, you can see the data shows about 82.6% of our students graduated last year meeting that CCCRI requirement. The bars show the areas in which our students demonstrated that readiness. And as I shared, this is an unduplicated count, so a student only had to meet one of these areas in order to meet that requirement. The state benchmark for meeting CCCRI is 85%. And looking at the data on this chart, you can see that Tab High School and York River Academy met this goal of 85% in their graduating cohort. And so, and they also met it last year, but this was also met this last year. All right, so any questions about CCCRI? Because now we're going to kind of go into the next portion of our, our presentation. Questions about that? Okay, all right. So Ms. Beasley is now going to talk about school quality indicators and school performance goals.
So school accreditation ratings are based on student performance across nine school quality indicators found on this chart. For elementary school and middle school, the state uses the six that are highlighted to determine accreditation ratings for each of our schools. High school is based on all nine school quality indicators found on this chart. Each indicator is rated with a level which ranges from one to three, as noted on the right-hand side of this slide. The first four school quality indicators that you see highlighted include, include a performance rating for each of the eight state reporting groups listed on the right of the screen. How each group performs on the English and math state assessments determines if a school meets these four school quality indicators. And so on the next slide, I'll share with you our school accreditation performance. So the left side of this chart shows the school quality indicators that were identified in our division's school quality report from VDOE. Although all of our schools are fully accredited, some of our schools did receive a final performance rating. performance rating of either a two or a three on these school quality indicators. So each school that's listed beside Achievement Gap English on this chart did not meet the performance requirement for a specific reporting group or groups, as noted in parentheses. Anything noted in the Level Two column indicates that the pass rate for that group was less than the state benchmark of 75%. And then anything noted in the Level Three column means that the pass rate for that group is less than or equal to 65%. Rooton High School's chronic absenteeism rate exceeds 15%, which makes them a Level Two.
So what we do now with this information, as I shared earlier, each of our schools will create a school improvement plan, and they will use this information, and they will put that information in, and they'll develop specific goals, action steps, progress monitoring around that particular mini-goal. They have several goals, but there will be a goal to address each of those areas that you saw there for the Level Two and Three. We also, at the Division, take a hands-on approach with this as well. And so any Level Two or Three, we have quarterly meetings for those schools, where they will come in, their team will come in, Dr. Shandor is a part of that, members of our executive leadership team, and we meet with them to review how students in that reporting group are performing and what strategies they're using, and we look at progress monitoring of those students. We also go out, our members of our executive leadership team go out and do shared classroom walkthroughs with those principals, and they receive also a report of that information. And then last but not least, students that are in those particular performance groups will receive tiered supports in the general education setting by a reading specialist or specially-designed instruction with a special education teacher. All right, so we're gonna, before we go to the last part of our presentation, did you have any questions about this section? Okay, so the last part of our presentation, and well, actually, I have one other slide before we go to that. I do wanna mention, and I wanted to put this on a slide, because sometimes you have questions about further information, and we just touched on, we touched on information, but if you wanna find out more about how a particular school did, how the Division did, you can go on to the Virginia Department of Education. It's called School Quality Profiles, and you can find out a lot more information. We can't really share so much, and as Dr. Shandor said, the 80 slides that we shared this evening, but not quite 80, but we try to give you an overview, but we certainly encourage you to go and look at the school quality profiles, and you can dig into that data a little bit more. All right, so now, I shared earlier that there has been a change to the accountability system at the Virginia State Department of Education, just, that just came through two weeks ago, I think it was. And tonight, we just wanted to do a very brief overview, because this new accountability system is in place now. And so it's changed, and we wanted to give you just a quick overview of that.
So the Virginia Board of Education approved new math standards in August of 2023, as I mentioned previously. They've also approved new English standards as of March of 2024. These standards will be fully implemented this year. The associated SOL tests that go along with these new standards will be realigned, and will measure these new standards for the first time in spring of 2025 for all of our students in grades three through eight and our high school assessments. Currently, our teachers and staff are implementing these newly-provided standards, new resources, new practice items, and those practice items our staff will use as we get closer to the assessments, so that both themselves, as well as our students, become familiar with the types of questions that are being asked in these new assessments.
Good question. What's cut scores?
Yep, I'm jumping, right there, yep. So the State Board of Education actually is working through their timeline to review and conduct what's called standard setting. So this, the way this works is they're basically reviewing to determine, they're reviewing all the questions and the data that comes along with these assessments to determine how many questions basically is equated to a pass score or number of questions equated to a pass advanced score. So they go through a pretty extensive timeline to do this. So the board just heard their first presentation a couple of weeks ago, and they will spend the whole school year conducting standard setting through a number of committees and committee work. The goal is that they've got those cut scores approved in February or March, so that we roll into the spring SOL assessment season aware of what those new cut scores are.
So are the, are the cut scores kind of like basically the rubric of, in order to get this score, this is what is expected, or is that something completely different?
That's something completely different, because our SOL assessments, we get not only what's called a scaled score, but we, in some assessments, get what's called a vertical scaled score. And that vertical scaled score is a second component that really looks at the rigor of the questions. And so four of us could all take similar assessments and have different vertical scaled scores because of the level of questioning. Our SOL tests for reading and math are computer adaptive, and so that allows for a lot of flexibility when our students take their assessments.
Is that because if, say they're answering questions, just say 10 questions, they start out and they get everything right, so then the subsequent questions are going to be more difficult versus, say you get a right, a wrong, a wrong, a right, the subsequent questions are going to be geared more for that, not all of it's correct?
Correct. So they're still aligned to our standards, and there is some flexibility in some of the questioning to go up a grade level or go down a grade level because of the computer adaptiveness of the assessment.
Do you know, when we get the assessments, and then when parents get the assessments, will they be told how that was scaled for their particular child?
Yeah, so our, our teachers, our parents get reports that tell them the standard that each of the, they're called item descriptors, are aligned to. So it's a really informative report that parents can actually access online within a couple of weeks of testing.
Okay. One more question. I know in the past, the state standards have always had like previous tests available for practice and review, and teachers use them, parents use them, some students use them just to get practice for them. Will the state be putting out any practice-type questions so that everybody gets an idea of, it's not like the previous ones, this is what we're doing now?
We do get practice materials as items will become available to us later this fall. It is still limited in scope, like there's not going to be a question available for every standard, but it does give our students and our teachers the opportunity to see the types of questions.
We also are giving our quarterly and our unit assessments, and we have alignment to the new standards there. That's something our team works on and develops, and we do that across the, the grade level so that we can begin to see and help our teachers understand the rigor of the curriculum and that we're assessing at that rigorous level. Thank you.
Okay, so as we mentioned, the Board of Education has been discussing and reviewing our current accreditation and accountability system since the summer of 2022. Identification of schools and divisions using the new accountability system will begin in fall of 2025. So a year from now, when Dr. Skinner and I bring this presentation to you, it will look quite different, as it will be modeled after our new accountability system. So it's important to know that we will report this data for the first time in fall of 2025, but we are using current school year data. So we will be using data from the 2024, 2025 school year. So the way the new accountability system works is the board has identified four categories for the school performance and support framework that will be used for the purposes of communicating school performance to the public. And those four categories are distinguished, on-track, off-track, and needs intensive support. They'll use a point system to determine which schools are assigned to each of the categories. So the framework uses a weighted model, as displayed on the screen, and each school level includes three categories to include mastery and readiness at all three levels. Growth is included for elementary and middle, while graduation is included for high school. So mastery will include student performance on our state assessments, and at the elementary school and middle school levels, growth will include an expected growth for students in grades four through eight, using data provided by the Virginia's Visualization and Analytics Solution, otherwise known as VIVAS. High school does not include growth, but instead measures graduation using a four-year federal cohort rate. Readiness will include things such as chronic absenteeism, a future performance task, and advanced coursework at middle school. And then readiness for high school is also going to include a six-year extended graduation rate that will include our applied studies diploma students and the Ready for Life three Es framework, that I'll discuss in more detail on the next slide.
So am I correct in, if, this will be the new framework for which they will base, you know, how they decide if we're like number one in the state or number four in the state? This will become the new measure? If you're distinguished, then? So we'll still have our scores from our standards of assessment, we can, we'll still be able to see that. But the accountability system, the rating system, so to speak, that is changing from what we have now, so you'll be one of those four categories. Each school would be determined, and it's all based on a point system, which we're still learning about, but that would put you where, on that four, that four areas ranges, it would place you on one of those.
Is the point system like one through 10 or one through 100?
It's one through 100. And so the, the band for, the points band for each of those four categories varies and gets wider as you go lower. So we, we talked previously about like the levels. Those really are gone in this new system, and instead, we have those four categories. So the VDOE Ready for Life three E framework is specifically going to be at high school, and this replaces that College Career and Civic Readiness Index, or that CCCRI that Dr. Skinner shared about. Unlike CCCRI, where you only were accounted for once in the data, the new framework measures student outcomes for employment and enrollment and enlistment. And so this supports that idea of developing a well-rounded, future-ready graduate. This fall, the board and the Virginia Department of Education will continue to finalize that state plan, and we anticipate that they will provide us a preliminary view of what school performance will look like under the new framework. At this time, this is the end of our presentation. What other questions or comments might you have for us?
To digest a little bit.
Thank you so much for the detail.
Thank you. It's really good. You're welcome. Thank you.
Obviously, as we get, receive more information related to the accreditation and all those things, we will certainly bring those items to the board. It is a lot to digest, that's for sure.
Do you see any potential, kind of like, you know, hiccups with this new accreditation system, kind of like, you foreseeing it right now?
So we have, it's not hiccups, but there's a lot of very purposeful planning we need to do, because this is coming into a, it was voted on two weeks ago, and it's in effect. Some of the things that she mentioned as far as advanced coursework, like advanced coursework in science and social studies, we will need to work with our program of studies, because we wanna have that in place as quickly as possible, because that is something that we're gonna be part of that system, we wanna be able to have those opportunities for our students. There's some things with CTE credentialing that we've got to really take some very purposeful planning and action steps over the next year. The program of studies presentation we typically bring in December to the board, we will probably be bringing in December, and January, and February, and March, because we anticipate there's going to be a lot of changes as we learn more through that. Great. Any other questions, comments? All right, so we're gonna.
Thank you, guys. You did a great job.
Thank you very much, yes.
So we're gonna move into our executive order updates, and Dr. Shandor, you'll provide your thoughts.
Yes, thank you. We have, we only have two more presentations. So we will, Ms. Catherine Goff, our Public Relations and Communications Officer, is gonna present an update on the collective commitment priority from the FY23-27 strategic plan. Ms. Goff?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, board members. I am going to be speaking to our collective commitment, which is one of the four priorities you're familiar with in our strategic plan, that identifies working with our community, our students, staff, families, to engage in supporting student success. So it's important to note in here that we do have a theory of action, which states that if we maintain open, honest, and timely communication with our team members, families, students, and community, take steps to partner with those who can support the needs of our students and schools, and ensure the voice of stakeholders is heard and used in decision-making, then we will have a community invested and engaged to support student success. And we chose this as a priority, knowing it's important that not only do we need to be intentional in today's digital age with the sheer volume of information that is shared out there, we have to be intentional in how and when, when and why we communicate, but we know the strength of having that strong communication, that two-way communication, and increasing family engagement, which ultimately does connect to student success. Same with the partnerships and investing in education as a community. So again, we have three areas of focus, and tonight, I'm going to be really focusing on the communication area of focus, our strategies in that area, as well as our key performance indicator. So beginning with that, it didn't show up the way it's supposed to, so we're gonna speak to customer service, internal communications, and external communication here. Beginning with the Let's Talk platform, you're very familiar with this now, this is K12 Insight. This is basically a web-based email platform, similar to Outlook, in how it functions, in that it provides us superior customer service, it streamlines communications into one unified inbox. And I've spoken to this before, but it's never hurts to remind, that we did adopt this platform because within Outlook, when we had major incidents happening, or just in day-to-day routines, we had one email inbox for the Division. That information would come in, and then a human being had to parse it out to try to identify staff. Or on our website, we had individual webs, email addresses listed, and so citizens and family members might go out and kind of throw it out at whomever they could find online. And so then we would have 10 or 12 staff members working on the same question, not knowing other staff members were already doing it, and that's not very efficient for us. The, another feature that Let's Talk provides for us is a security feature, because we are able to use that platform and remove email addresses. We really strive to not have email addresses posted on the website. There are still ways to connect with specific staff members, we just tried to hide that because it prevents phishing and scams. So it's very important to our T department that we take proactive steps here to protect the Division in that area. But it doesn't just benefit us as far as efficiencies, it does benefit our community because they can access it at any time. They know that the inquiries, they actually can choose the topics they want, so it is going to the right person quickly, and it does allow us to monitor our response times so that we are ensuring communications don't get lost and they're being responded to promptly. So knowing that, we're going to look at this past year's overall statistics. So in Let's Talk, something that we have that we could not do with an email, is we can monitor the sheer number of dialogues, which is inquiries that come into the system. We can monitor how quickly staff are able to resolve and respond to those individuals. And then we also receive customer service feedback from those who opt in to do that. And I'll tell you, looking at this data, 4,000 dialogues, and working with the company, York County School Division is considered to be a division that has the greatest success in our country using this, including divisions of much larger size, and how individuals adapt and have begun using this platform. We're also able to look down into the dialogue activity, how many are coming in per month, what's our volume. You'll notice right there, in this past year, December sees that dip, most likely because schools are closed for two weeks. So because you're looking at the most common customer type over there, those are our families. So families don't have that many questions for us when schools are closed in December. And then we're also able to look at the categories that we have communications coming in on, and those categories are then further drilled into specific dialogue topics. So we're going to spend a little time looking at the Division statistics specifically, because in that last slide, you might have noticed, 65% of all communications come in are related to Division-level matters. So looking right here, you can see quickly that operations, Division leadership, and human resources are our top three areas of topic there. And those encompass much more than just operations. Operations is already about five departments in there, so you might be having topics coming in related to safety, recruitment, and retention.
Transportation.
Transportation, student enrollment. There are a vast number of topics that our community can choose from in there to help them get to that correct person. And then just last year, you can then see within those topics, the most common, and we've spoken to the board about this previously, school board was a very common topic last year. Job applications and employment, our HR department uses this fantastically so that the multiple individuals who support employees who are looking for information or. individuals who support employees who are looking for information or potential employees, they're on that very quickly getting out to that. The reported feature, Dr. Shandor had mentioned that earlier today, this is a significant program because that can escalate our communications to critical and send alerts to multiple staff members if a report comes in after hours. So, we use that, and then our next highest last year was the public records request. That's, we anticipate seeing a change in that this year as far as some of those topics. So, now, I want to look at, went right to the next thing. Okay, so now, I want to look at the two-year trends. So, as you can see, over the last two years, since we have really utilized this immensely, we have about 6,000 dialogues that we have received. And so, I want to kind of dig into that because this is going to show you the dialogues by year, and that is our trend line increase right there. It's a little harder to see on this one, so I apologize for that. We're working on actually updating this model right now. But you can see, we've actually had a five, 50% growth in our dialogues from 2023 school year to the 2324 school year. And then, in that timeframe, though, we were able to actually improve our response rates, so we decreased that slightly. Our customer service scores, they did dip a tad from 2023 to 2024. But I would note, when we look at that data, customer scores, they are not necessarily always based on how we handled the response. They are sometimes based on whether or not an individual agrees with the response they received. So, if they're not happy with the answer they got, they can give us a bad score on that area. So, it just shows you again right there. So, wanted to speak to some of the work that we have engaged in, in Let's Talk, in that platform. So, this past year, we had implemented a number of workflows, and workflows are essentially an execution the system can implement using specific conditions. So, we've had a dialogue age. If a dialogue goes unanswered for 24 hours, a reminder will go out to the staff members attached to that dialogue. If it goes another 24 hours, it escalates to a supervisor to make sure that we are paying attention to those trends. If someone does give us, you know, a lower-than-anticipated response on customer service, we follow up to ask them what, what exactly could we have done better to do that? But more importantly, are those key words that we speak to? For example, when we first initiated Let's Talk, principals and APs were the only individuals at their buildings getting the questions. Anything that came in to, say, Yorktown Middle School, just the principal and the two APs there could respond to it. And that put a lot of burden on them because a number of times, the questions are pretty simple. Somebody might just wanted to report a student absence, or maybe they were asking a question about their lunch meal balance. We now have key words that our staff helped us identify so we can add in clerical staff in those building, or the counselors. Yes, thank you. The counselors might be able to assist with a scheduling concern that somebody brings forward. So, those actions, once again, allow that automation to improve how quickly we are able to respond to our families and citizens. We also added in the virtual assistant last year. This is a chatbot that we were one of the pilot school divisions in the country to test this for the company, and that even further enhances it because now, individuals, if they want to come in and ask a question about, say, when is spring break? The AI actually can read our website. It can pull from documents, from all the information on our website, and it reduces the person having to wait 24, until the business reopens. So, certain questions it can ask. It also is smart enough, like the way it works is that if they, it will ask, did this answer your question? So, then, if it doesn't answer their question, or we feel that it's inaccurate in how it responded, we're able to reprogram and enter in information. So, we're able to constantly help it learn so that we are not, you know, monitor or sending out incorrect information through the AI platform. So, very excited to that, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback from people being able to, to get answers even when we are closed. Now, I'm gonna shift to our internal communications, and we have talked about the Division Intranet with the Board previously mentioned some of this. So, this is an example of our relaunch of the YCSD Intranet. It was about 12 years, well, I wouldn't say it was 12 years overdue, but I believe the current version we had 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 been in place for about 13 years, and we had been looking for a way to update it and bring it more in line with what the needs of our, our staff were. And so, this site right here was developed based on staff input and feedback. The most significant component they asked us for was to be able to access this without being, having to log into Citrix. So, we were able to accomplish that. It includes links to the most frequently-used platforms that they use, which are actually customized based on your employee group, so that instead of having to weed through components that may not apply to your area, you are getting those that are most frequently used by you. And then, as you scroll through the website, you can see each department is able to push out news and announcements that may be relevant to our staff, to different areas of the staff. Well, it was very important to us to share to our staff, and you can see that there was a benefit to them for the Wawa coffee in that week that I captured this, this image. But you can also see we're giving them various workshops, professional development notices can come here, and then this can follow up as emails directly into their inboxes. Important calendar dates, the frequently-asked questions, and that can rotate based on what we are receiving, which leads us to that next spot that we get into where we have two components right here where they, staff can send in a question at any time, as we shared with our timely and open communication. We don't want staff to have a delay. If there's a question they have for the division, they're able to submit that at any time and receive that response in the same timeframe as, instead of going through channels. But more importantly, we want staff to have a say in some of our decision-making that impacts them. So, if they have a suggestion, we do have that suggestion box available to them, and we'll be utilizing various components of the Pulse survey that Dr. Wright shared through this to continue to upgrade this, this site. And then, I know we spoke to this, Mr. Pyovich, last year, that the division current, currently has what's considered a non-responsive website model. It was built and launched prior to websites having the responsive model. And a responsive model means that it will look the exact same on your desktop or laptop as it would on a cellphone. So, for the last 12 years or so, our staff have actually managed a platform, the main website, and then we have a scaled-down version of a mobile device, and we've been working on getting to a point where we could overhaul the entire website. So, we began that work last year and are now moving into, by the end of this school year, next summer, we will be launching the responsive website. So, users, anyone who accesses yorkcountyschools.org would be able to have the same experience, whether they're on their website, on a mobile phone, or on a laptop or desktop computer. And our, yes, it's very important to us. It's just as we paced out the work, that one was probably the biggest lift we would have in our communications plan, so that one was, took a little bit longer than we had originally hoped, but it's there. So, our next steps over this year, in addition to designing and launching that responsive website, we want to expand the content and offerings that we have on my YCSD, working with various departments, so that it is really a growing resource for our staff to, to help them in their employment, and then also looking at investigating additional components of the K-12 Insight platform. So, it is important, I think, that we note that when we speak to, in the budget, our K-12 Insight program, it is not just the, the Let's Talk platform. It also involves K-12 Engage, and that's our survey component. That's how we issue the monthly Pulse surveys, how we issue our school climate and culture, those surveys at the end of the year. And then, there's a few new platforms that we've been speaking to them about, looking for how we can potentially use it for work order systems or other areas that we can use, and none of those are at extra cost. They come within the total component, so we want to utilize it to the greatest advantage of the division. And that covers our collective commitment update. See if there are any questions.
I wanted to add just two points. One, Jason Short, who's our Digital Services and Applications Development Manager, he really did an amazing job on the IYCD Intranet, so he did a great job with that. Catherine did fail to mention him tonight, so I'll...
I feel like I've given his name a few shout-outs. He's an amazing employee.
So, he's done a great job, and we're currently looking to replace Brittany, who left us, and Ms. Goff has done some interviews related to the coordinator of digital media and design, so we're in process of filling that position.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Um, quick question about the AI part of it.
Yes.
Did you say we just implemented it at the start of this school year, or was that...
This past school year.
This past year.
So, we've had it in for...
So, do you, any sense of, because I know with some AI, I've seen where they thought AI can actually give wrong information?
So, ours is based on the content that's on our website.
Okay.
We initially, actually, working with the company, gave a list of questions that we were able to answer. And if it's not able to answer the question, it will direct them to...
So, it's not gonna do something like just take something?
No, it is contained to, in the division's website. It does not search outside of our content to look for other information. It's a very important component, so thank you for asking that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Goff.
Okay. All right, so I believe we've got presentation from Dr., is it Dr. Carroll?
Yes, Dr. Carroll is gonna now, we have three executive order updates from Dr. Carroll. I believe it's Executive Order 2830 and 33, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
All right, thank you, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you.
This is good one, members of the Board. So, as Dr. Shandor said, here's a brief recap of three executive orders that have come from the Governor. So, first of all, we had Executive Order 28, and this one, all of these have long titles. Parental notification, law enforcement collaboration, and student education to prevent student overdoses. And you'll remember that this was quite a news item a little while ago, especially up in northern Virginia. So, the purpose of the Governor's executive order was to reverse the trend of increasing overdoses for all Virginians, not just school-based or school-aged children, and especially from fentanyl, as we know that's been a growing epidemic. It's predicated on the premise that transparency and community awareness are essential to ensure student safety, and that failure to promptly notify parents endangers students. Now, the directives that have come out are that the VDOE has issued guidance advising prompt notification of all parents within a school division of a school-connected overdose. Now, there is no requirement, but it advises for that. And a school-connected overdose would be something that, of course, if something were to happen in school, that would count, but also, and it is up to local definition, but if it was on a bus, if it was at a school-sponsored event, if it was on a field trip or an athletic game or something like that, so that's what you, you define as a school-connected event. It also issued guidance outlining close collaboration between the local school divisions and state law enforcement to prevent student overdoses, and for VDOE to provide information to local school divisions and parents for students to develop decision-making skills. So, so far, for our progress, the state has released a list of best practices and formal guidance. We've reviewed those documents, and we have posted parent resources supplied by VDOE on our website, and we plan to make notification decisions on a case-by-case basis because of the fact that, first of all, you would have to work with the, you know, the Sheriff's Department and define how that would be an overdose. And then, secondly, we have to keep our privacy, FERPA requirements in mind, and so we have to get through some obstacles there, and then we would try to make the fastest notification that we could. The Governor asked for 24 hours' notice, but there is some leeway there based on the situation, but the point being that you don't just ignore it or you don't put it off. And it is a good point, a good time for me to point out that I've been in this seat for five years, and we've had zero cases of this. So, you know, we've been, we've been lucky, or we've been fortunate, but this is not something that we've had to deal with. However, we are going to be prepared for it in the, in the event that it did. Also, the state issued a model memorandum of understanding for divisions to partner with law enforcement. Now, we have a longstanding MOU with YPSO, and we review that annually. In fact, we're in, we're involved in that right now. We're currently reviewing draft language and working with the Sheriff's Department, and we will be folding some of the language from this formal guidance into our revision suggestions. Now, we'll move on to Executive Order 30.
Can I ask you a quick question about that one? When you said, just for clarification, notification, you're talking about notification to the state, correct?
No, we're talking notification to our parents.
To the parents.
And we have to use our local, our usual communication vehicles. So, just like you saw some today where we used our Blackboard Connect and we text our parents, and we put, principals gave out messages that we would use those types of vehicles for that notification.
Okay.
Would that be division-wide or school-wide, or a combination of both, depending on the incident?
We're gonna, we're gonna take this as a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Just to give an example, if something were to happen at, say, Bruton High School, but you've got, you've got to ask the question, why would you be notifying Bethel Manor parents? And so, we would be looking at the situation, looking at the circumstances that are around it, and then make a reasoned decision on how wide we would go. The, the executive order advises you to do it division-wide, but we don't know if that would be wise in every case.
Thank you.
Is there a timeframe requirement?
They asked for 24 hours, but there may be a reason why you wouldn't be able to meet that, that deadline, so you would want to be as close to possible.
Thank you.
All right, Executive Order 30 is implementation of standards for the safe use of artificial intelligence, AI, as we talked about a little bit earlier, across the Commonwealth. Now, this is an executive order that is a larger scope than just schools. The Governor recognized that AI products are already deployed across a number of state government agencies, and schools are involved there. Some of the language that was used that was, this was vital to recognize both the usefulness of this technology and the necessity to place some guardrails on its use. As far as directives for, for us, for K-12 education, is they issued AI education guidelines in conjunction with the executive order, and there was a document called the Guidelines of Integration Throughout Education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, once again, it establishes no requirements, but it makes suggestions, especially for guiding principals for use of AI, the successful integration into, strategies for successful integration into schools, and the rules and responsibilities of how you should handle that. We have reviewed those guidelines and the model policy, and how we're going to work through this is, there's currently, or right now, being created an education technology working group because we're in need of revise our educational technology plan. That group is going to review this executive order along with the model policy concerning internet safety for the upcoming, for the upcoming plan that I just mentioned, and that plan will be coming to you later in the fall, and you'll probably see some components of this executive order and that guidance. Do we want to stop? Any questions on the AIs? All right, and the last one is one that's also got, been in the news lately, establishing cellphone-free education to promote the health and safety of Virginia's K-12 students. The Governor noted that stakeholders are expressing concerns over the alarming mental health crisis and chronic health conditions affecting adolescents, driven at least in part by extensive social media usage and widespread cellphone possession among children. And here, there were eight directives from VDOE and local school divisions, including draft policy guidance that came out about a month ago, and then there will be model implementation plans, and those are expected next Monday. And then, the local school divisions must adopt a policy by January 1st, so you'll be seeing something this fall, and this is what that timeline will look like. So, in August, we reviewed the draft guidance. When we looked at that draft guidance, there are two features that really stand out. One, that there are some features of it that are absolute requirements, and there are others that you can use local discretion, and also the fact that it had, there was an emphasis on developmentally appropriate restraints. And so, you saw different guidance at elementary, middle, and high school. So, we look forward to seeing what of that gets at, finally, finalized in the final guidance come Monday. We've already started to build the stakeholder committee that will start their work in September, and we expect to be surveying stakeholders on some of those discretionary components of the plan. In October, we'll be reviewing those survey results, and I expect to be conducting some focus groups, especially with some employee groups and students, and then working with that stakeholder committee. And then working with that stakeholder committee to craft a first draft of, that will give to the cabinet for some cabinet feedback. And then they will work on a final guidance that then I will present to you at the November 18th work session. And then look for board approval in an next butt-eyed manner on November 25th. And we do have one other option if for, if there is any debate or discussion or you all direct us to go back and look at something, we then could bring it back to you at the December 9th meeting, which is a, you know, combined meeting. We have a work session followed by a regular meeting. Because after that meeting, then we got to put it into motion so we're ready for the return of students after winter break. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
One question on this last one dealing with the cell phones. Yes, definitely, the cell phones are a problem in the classrooms, you know, distractions. And I know there's a lot of data out there. But also, we're dealing with the amount of screen time also on Chromebooks and other digital. And I know the VDOE has put out the digital devices in the classroom identifying how many hours per day we're supposed to have screen time. And that would include both in the classroom as well as homework assignments. Will that be part of this also, since you're dealing with screen time not only on the cell phones, but also screen time with the Chromebooks and that at-home screens?
I don't anticipate that because that wasn't part of the executive order and, and what we're charged to do here. Now, I do know we've had those discussions and I'd love to defer to Dr. Turner.
I know, we can, we can add because the governor's guidelines, you know, our guidelines and executive orders, you know, it's still up to the local school boards and, and school divisions that we can add to it, make it more stringent, things like that, or throw other things into it, you know, like the screen time.
Right.
See if that was a possibility.
We have a, I believe it's a, whether it's a SOP or I think it's a standard operating procedure. I'm trying to remember if it's that or if it's a superintendent's regulation. Yes, we have a superintendent's regulation that actually outlines expectations for the use of that. And we reference and we actually use the guidelines that VDOE provides to us. Beginning of the school year, I sent out through a superintendent's memo and reiterated those guidelines to our staff so that they would know those. So we don't want to wait so that we already have those in place, that expectation. And so our teachers are asked to follow those guidelines with our students.
And, and one other thing is I don't think we have a way to measure that. Like we can't, different programs monitor screen time different ways. Some programs, as soon as you turn it on, if there's a clock, then once it's on, it's on until it goes off. If you're working like a computer-assisted program, they might be monitoring keystrokes to see if you're still engaged. But we don't have programs like that that I'm aware of. And therefore, getting that type of monitoring from the division level is not a, not an ability we have. Therefore, this guidance that we're giving teachers and administrative monitoring is really the best way we can do that.
And, and the work that Dr. Sherlock will, will lead with the Technology Committee. There are three pieces to that, and he'll share more when he does his presentation. But it is appropriate use of student, using technology for our students, how teachers should be using it in the classroom. All of those things are addressed as part of that educational technology plan. And the guy, and there is guidance from the state, we're using that guidance to help us to follow ours. And there'll be a committee of parents that are.
That is a part of strategic plan as well.
And we also, at the retreat, as a board, we discussed it and decided that just the measurability of how you do screen time, you, you can't quantify that, that just, you know, I mean, you can have a best practice. And of course, you know, there's that responsibility on the parents to monitor how much screen time's happening at home. But we decided, and correct me if I'm wrong, you guys were there, so we did talk about that.
Yes, yes.
So we just cannot, I don't think that's something we can do. And I don't think that policy, that policy is specific to cellphone use.
Yeah. You mean executive order?
Executive order, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, executive orders.
So.
So we'll bring you a draft in, in November.
Boy. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for the presentations. Great, very informative. Our next regular board meeting is 23rd, September 23rd. That's me, I have. All right, there's no further questions, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.